Let's do a quick roll call, Mr. Stenbridge.
President.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
President.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Ms. Panato? Waiting on Ms. Panato. Do you want me to proceed with six top here or wait a minute?
Uh, we could proceed with six, start the case and hopefully four member Panato joins. I think she just joined.
She's here. Okay, sorry, just doing roll call.
Sorry about that.
You're good. All right. So just again, as a reminder, we are currently a seven-member board. At 2:00 PM, we will become a five-member board as two board members need to depart. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to the hearings for 11:00 AM, we have two companion cases, the first being case BOA 1497967 with the address of 56 Murdoch Street. And with that, we have case BOA 14973, 1497973 with the address being 58 Murdoch Street. Is the applicant and/or the representative present?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano, business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here in behalf of the client, Stan Klebner with Odessa Capital, and we also have the architect with us today, Adam Glassman. The project that you're looking at today is 56 Murdoch and 58 Murdoch. What we're proposing is to raise an existing three-unit structure. You can meet Adam's ambassador. He could say right on this slide. That's perfect. Thank you. We're proposing to raise the existing structure on a 17,020-square-foot lot. This is the largest lot in that immediate area. We're proposing to develop two separate condominium buildings, each that would house, and we're looking at that in this rendering, three condominiums in each building. And this would have eight associated parking spaces in the back, four to go with 56 and four to go with 58 respectively. There is a shared driveway down the middle of the project and a great amount of green space with a rear yard setback. If we go to the next slide, please, just to give the board another view. You can see that as we worked with the community for the better part of a year and a half, we redesigned this project to blend within the character and nature of the buildings in this immediate area. Although this is a 2F 5,000-square-foot district, we are a 17,000-square-foot lot, as I had mentioned. There is a condo building next to us, right. There is a three-unit building left, and then as you go down, it's a mix. There's a number of twos. Some of those are all on smaller lots. When we started, just to give you some background, we started this proposal, we were at, we were proposing just because of the lot size, a 13-unit condominium building. And working with the PAIA to get their support, as well as many of the direct neighbors, we scaled that down to a 10-unit building, nine, and then eight, and then ultimately where we were at today with six units on the site. By doing so, we actually eliminated the FAR violation, the height violation, and we increased our green space and our rear yard setback. The layout of these buildings, if you go start going through the plans, Madam Ambassador, they're identical buildings. That's actually, if we go back to that one slide, I'm sorry. This is just an aerial view so you can see the size of the lot in question that we're proposing to build on and just sort of the composition of the neighborhood. Sorry about that. If you go to the next slide. The buildings will be identical. It would have common just storage space in the basement. They would, again, on the first floor, that would house unit one on each building. That would be two-bedroom with a deck at 1,367 square feet, 67 square feet. These would be family-sized units. The second floor of each building would house unit two, and that would be two-bedroom with a deck, 1,527 square feet. And then finally, the third unit, which is a three-bedroom in each building, at 1,484 square feet. The violations that were mentioned, we are proposing three-unit buildings, and this is a 2F district. So use lot size, we are now 17,020. 30,000 would be required for the two, so it would be slightly under. Lot frontage, we're close. We're at 100 feet would be what the code requires. We're at 93.5. And then on our side setbacks, we do have the garage, the driveway in the middle, but we still have 7'11" on our left side, and our right setback is 7'7". 10 would be required. And then for parking, we're close. We're at four, so that gives us one additional visitor spot for each building. And on this slide, you can just see where the driveway comes in through the rear and then all of the green space in the back and in the front of the building, which was something that was important to the neighborhood. We did get the recommendation of approval from the BPDA, which was good, and I can pause there for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I just have a question on the access aisle shown on the parking plans. Is that required? For accessible?
And down the, I'm sorry, Ms. Weewell, down the middle or where the handicap?
No, the access aisle with, for stalls one and eight, it's typically seen with accessibles to allow loading and
Yep.
and accessible. Is that what, is that required or was that?
I think so, just because of that. But I'll let, if Adam is on, I don't know if he is on, he can, he designed that so I can let him better explain that. I don't know if Adam Glassman is on the call, Madam Ambassador.
Are any of the units accessible or?
Sorry. Adam, are you on? Sorry. The ground-level units, yes.
That's okay. I was just curious about it.
I think they go with those accessible units, to be honest with you.
You can usually see in publicly accessible parkings.
You are.
Well, let's keep going, and if Mr. Glassman joins us, he can try to answer that.
Said he needs to be added as a panelist. I'm sorry, I do see him in the comments.
Are there other questions from the board? So why don't we go to public testimony and circle back to that if it's still a question?
Sure.
Good morning.
Go ahead, Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Frank Mendoza here, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, Austin Brighton liaison, here to testify that the applicant did have two butters meetings through our office and also met with the local civic association. Some of the butters who were present at the butters' meetings had concerns regarding the number of mature trees, the status of parking, the efforts that would be taken towards management of trash, particularly as it relates to rodent mitigation, as well as the overall size and density of the project, as some felt that it was too large in relation to the character of the existing neighborhood. The Brighton-Austin Improvement Association, zoning chair Annabelle Gomes could be on this testify after myself, did vote in support of the project before you. With that said, we will be deferring to judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Do you know whether a lucky official will go to Annabelle?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes with the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. The proposal has gone through different revisals, and this is the revival that was most liked by all the neighbors and received support from the BIA at the last meeting on it, and we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
Yes, my name is Christopher Ross. I'm at 59 Murdoch Street, directly across from this property. And I have been attending all the various meetings that have occurred, and I would like to thank the Odessa Capital for at least trying to accommodate our comments, reducing the overall number of units. However, even at the most recent meeting, the, there were a number of butters who had the same concern about the higher density of units in this, these pair of buildings where it is much higher than any of the surrounding areas. And with that is the relatively few number of parking spots that are equated with this. They are, for the total number of bedrooms in here is totally inadequate, and so that would force many cars to be parked on the off-street parking, which is already athor, beyond its capacity, since Murdoch is a one-way street, so it's parking on only one, one side of this. The other, I have a number of concerns.
Can you please, can you please be brief? We have other raised hands.
Yes, okay. The, I'll just stick with the main things. The shortened side yard between the 58 Murdoch side and the adjoining 62 Murdoch, there is like a four-foot elevation difference, and the plans do not account for that large of a drop, as well as exactly where the property line is. It is unclear if that property line might be in the center of that driveway, which would put the edge of the building at the edge of the, that steep drop-off.
Okay, let's, let's move on to the next.
Okay, yes, that's, that's my.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Heather and then Myron?
Hi, my name is Heather Durecher. I live at 76 Mapleton Street, just around the corner from this site. My back, back of my house looks onto this site. I, you know, I hate to compare this to the ridiculous 13-unit beast that they wanted to put on the site at first. This is still too dense on the site. There's too many units. It's too close to the neighbors with too many variances. The side porch, porches face the neighbors, and you're already, it's already too close to the, to the property line. It's just too, too encroaching. The driveway is too tight to turn around. It's very difficult when somebody's coming out of the driveway and somebody's going in. You're backing out onto a one-way street. It's hard to see. The corner of Murdoch and Sparhawk, just the first intersection at the top of the road, is a nightmare. There was an accident yesterday where three cars were involved in an accident, and the traffic increases, and it has to be reduced to, I recommend, one building with three units.
Thank you.
Thank you. Myron?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, mine operating representative Carpenter Senior would like to go and write on support of this project.
Adam? Do you want me to keep on? Madam Chair?
How many more raised hands are there?
Two more.
Okay.
Okay, Adam and then Kevin.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Adam Ossini. I'm actually a next-door neighbor, so our property would be impacted the variance that the developers violating. It's too close to our building, and my main concerns are what's been raised. The, I think Mr. Drago said that the, you need 30,000, 30,000, 30,000 square feet for this many people density. That's, you know, the lot is 17,000. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to be, you need twice as much land to put.
Thank, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Kevin?
Hey, everyone. How's it going? My name is Kevin Murray. I live up the road at 1.
You're muted.
Hey, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Hey, guys. So my name is Kevin Murray. I live up at 129 Murdoch Street. I drive by the property every day. I've looked at the plans. I think that the current property is an eyesore, and I think the Austin-Brighton community could benefit from additional housing stock, and I'd like to go on record to say that I support this project.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands.
Mr. Drago would like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there were a couple of points about this being, you know, a lot that only houses, or an area that only has two families. Someone mentioned 59 Murdoch. That building itself is a three-unit building on a 6,900-square-foot lot. The building that is on half this property now existing is a three-unit. There's a condo building to the right, so we're not changing the composition. We actually tried to meet most of the area in terms of size and density based on our lot size. But beyond that, we also heard about a rear setback, our neighbor in the back. That's why we modified this project. We actually have a 97-foot setback to the rear of the property, all of green space. Our parking is over what would be, you know, a one-for-one, so we actually added a visitor spot to each side. Anything beyond that, you start, we would start cutting into additional green space. We felt one additional spot per, per building would be sufficient. Also, in terms of, they said the massing, we're actually below the height requirement, so we are at 35 feet. We're actually at 34.5, so that's where we're below what would even be required. And our side setback is as laid out, and the reason why we split the building into two separate buildings was based on our butter feedback in the civic association. So we put that driveway, it's got a 10-foot access point, which is the minimum we would need, so we didn't extend it anymore. And we still have almost eight feet on either side compared to the other buildings, and we're below the FAR requirement for this neighborhood as well. We're at .58, and .6 would be required, would be a lot with the code, so we really tried to, all the accommodations that we heard.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Drago, just to clarify, your setback on the left is 7-1, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, it's a little confusing with the legend.
Sure, and the other side is 7'7".
I got 6-9 on the right. Are there cantilevers?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I'm sorry, if I could go back to the parking question. The architect is here.
Sure. This is brand-new construction. It's ground up, and the accessibility code would be triggered here, both for accessible units and for accessible parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll put forward a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review to explore alternatives in the driveway location and to increase or improve usability of open space, as well as the front elevation design.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Here also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we'll move on to case BOA 1493812 with the address of 94 Perham Street. The applicant and/or the representative present?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please proceed, Mr. Smith.
So my name is Kyle Smith of Sotero Law, business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay. I also have the owner of the call on this, oh, sorry, the owner of the property on this call as well. And then our most impacted butter, 96 Perham, is also on the call with us as well. We have a pre-existing structure located on a parcel with approximately 6,400 square feet of lot size. The rear extension that you see is currently, the top floor doesn't have a good head height. The intent is to effectively raise the head height of the rear portion of this building to bring it in line with the existing roof pitch, thereby rendering that top floor usable. The current occupants are the husband and wife. Mr. Vertman's on this call. The intent of this end used space is for the mother-in-law, for her to be able to age in place with the, with her effectively daughter and son-in-law. So we have effectively one violation, which is the extension or exacerbation of a non-conformity, which is the side yard setback. Current setback distance is 8.2 feet.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yes. How's the parking situation?
There's existing off-street parking for the family, and the family, mother-in-law, as I understand, doesn't drive, so they won't be burdening the family with any more vehicles.
Okay.
And just to note, we do have letters of support from our left, our right a butter, who is also on this call, our most impacted, and directly across the street as well.
Okay, with that, may I take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS held in a butters' meeting, as I understand, was a very positive meeting. The applicant then went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which voted to support this proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Raj Michael Flaherty, councilor making support.
Patrick?
Hi, Patrick Collins, immediate a butter at 96 Perham Street. My wife and I are fully in support of the project and are hopeful that you'll provide permission for it to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Have no additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Here also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we have case BOA 1475509 with the address of 9 Ashfield Street. Is the applicant and/or the representative present?
Scott, is that you?
Yep.
There we go. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Put your camera on.
It won't let me put the camera on, so I can just go ahead and talk. So I'm sharing. I'm just, my husband Jerry Howland is here with us. We live at 9 Ashfield Street. We have lived there for 40 years. We are proposing to renovate our kitchen, which has, as I said, been in existence for the 40 years. It's not been changed in that time period, and also add a half bathroom on the first floor, as there is no bathroom on the first floor at this point. The house is existing non-conforming. It was built in 1890, so it already surpasses the rear setback for housing. We are proposing, as we do the kitchen renovation, to push the back of all of the house out about five, five and a half feet across the back length of the house. You can see it in that top picture there in the middle. That's what it would look like. You see the side views on either side, on the right and the left. The architect, these are the architect plans that we've developed, and at this point, we've had our neighborhood meetings, we've had conversations with all of our butters who are in support of the project. So this is really to renovate our 40-year-old, more than 40-year-old kitchen and add a powder room on the first floor.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. A man public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Diana Bonchuk, Mayor's Rosalind Lee liaison from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We held in a butters' meeting on June 29th with no butters attending. The project presented at the Longfellow Area Neighborhood Association on July 10th, where the organization voted in no opposition. We have not received any statements related to this project, and at this time, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Raj Michael Flaherty, councilor making support.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the project.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Back pin.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah. Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Here also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1488429 with the address of 1523 to 1525 Blue Hill Avenue. This is also an Article 80 project. Is the applicant and/or they represent the president?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent New Millennium LLC. Its principal, Dimitri Pechon, is here today, as is the project architect, Cheryl Zagayas. This is an application to construct a new five-story building at 1525 Blue Hill Avenue. The building would contain approximately 21,920 gross square feet, including 16 homeownership units and ground-floor bi-level commercial space, with nine ground-level parking spaces, 16 resident bicycle parking spaces indoors and four visitor parking spaces outdoors. This is a BPDA-approved Article 80 small project, as Mr. Stenbridge noted. Mr. Pechon owns and operates the current businesses at the site, the Multicultural Counseling Center, Inc., a behavioral healthcare service provider, and UMA Health, Inc., and will continue to provide these services in the new building during construction. My client will continue, will move administrative services to another location, and will return to this site after the construction phase to anchor the commercial space in the building. But those organizations will continue to provide services utilizing telehealth as the primary modality to continue to provide patient care during construction. The building's ground floor will consist of the commercial space, which also extends into the basement and total 2,355 square feet. The building's main residential entry and lobby, secure bicycle storage room, and nine motor vehicle parking spaces. Floors 2 through 5 will be occupied by the 16 residential condominium units with eight one-bedroom units, or two-bedroom units, and four three-bedroom units. The IDP units will be two one-bedroom units offered at 80% AMI and one two-bedroom unit offered at 100% AMI, as outlined in the BPDA Board Memo. This represents 18.75% affordability. The project site consists of two parcels being consolidated. One parcel is located within a community commercial zoning sub-district and the other within a 2 of 6,000 sub-district. The site of violations therefore include some duplicative violations owing to the two applicable zoning sub-districts. More important with respect to the zoning, I believe, is that the project site is located within the boundaries of Plan Matapan, BPDA Community Planning Initiative, commenced in 2018, which was approved by the BPDA on May 11th of this year. Under the adopted plan, this site is an area programmed to have taller and denser buildings with an active ground floor in exchange for community benefits such as improved green space and streetscape and affordable accessible housing. In this context, the request of zoning relief is reasonable and reasonably necessary in order to comply with the goals and guidelines of Plan Matapan. This project will preserve significant site open space, including a mature tree planting on Blue Hill Avenue. It meets and exceeds city housing affordability requirements and will promote an active ground floor use, which provides and will continue to provide needed and appreciated mental health care services to the community. Numerous other project benefits are detailed in the BPDA Board Memorandum, which has been made available to the board. With that, I'll pause, and we'll take any questions or comments that any members of the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Can we hear from, is the BPDA project manager on? Okay, don't hear that. All right, with that, can I have public testimony? Sorry, Tyler Ross is on. Let me just get Tyler from the BPDA. Tyler, were you looking to give, also weigh in on this?
Yes, I'm looking to give testimony here. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and thank you, Jessica. The BPDA held two public meetings for this project in April and May of 2022. These were both well-attended and advertised in the local newspaper. The proponent also worked with the community members to address concerns regarding affordability, unit size, as well as the proponent has been a local tenant of the neighborhood for several years with their psychiatric business on the ground floor that they are proposing to keep. So with that, I'll turn it back over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Royal's office?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here, Chief of Staff, the Councilor Ricardo Royal. Would like to go on record and support this proposal. Thank you very much.
You're on. Is Mr. James from ONS looking too?
Yep, go ahead, James.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you guys for hearing this proposal. The applicant for 1525 Blue Hill Ave did complete their process with the Boston Planning Development Agency. As of right now, the only thing that we heard back from the community, from the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council, is that they would like it to be marketed first, the three affordable units. They would like it to be marketed first to Matapan residents using, using a marketing tactic that will actually reach Matapan residents. I think they're afraid that it may be poorly marketed to the residents, and they would like them to have primary consideration for the affordable units. In terms of trash and trash removal, they would like to have no barrels being placed on the public sidewalk for that building and none in the street. And the same thing for the Matapan Square Main Street, so they agree to everything the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council has stated. And they also would like to see them work with the main streets if they decide to do anything in that building that is commercial besides a medical practice. And then in terms of the medical practice, they would also like to see them working with the Matapan Community Health Center, as the health center has voiced that they would like to add some specialties and expand its practices, so that there's a wide range of services available to the residents in Matapan. With that, I thank you guys again, and we are deferring our judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, binder?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, mine are representatives of the male woman from the carpenter union. Would like to go on record and support all this project.
I have no additional raise stands. With that, may I have a motion?
Can the proponent just confirm they'll have a dumpster, not barrels for a 16-unit property?
This is George Moranci. I'm not certain, sure, I don't know if Zagayas is on, if she remembers back to the community process. I forget what the representation was made on that. There is, I'm looking at the plans myself. Yeah, there's a trash recycle area. It looks like a fourth bin.
Yeah, that's what I had explained.
In the garage area. Yep, exactly.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Here are also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Prior to going forward, we'd like to ask if there are any withdrawals or deferrals in the 11:30 hearings?
Yes, sir, this is Richard Lenz, 169.
Hold on for about five minutes. All right, let's go with Mr. Lenz first.
Go ahead, Mr. Lenz.
Sure, sorry about that. 169 Maverick Street, I believe, is on for building code.
That would be case BOA 1475953 with the address of 169 Maverick Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lenz, 245 Summer Street in East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this is for building code relief only. I believe we may have resolved the issues. I just wanted to check with my client to confirm that there are no outstanding building code issues that need to be addressed with respect to the project. So what I'd ask for is just a deferral on the matter, and we may end up just withdrawing the case altogether. But once I've confirmed that that's all set, we'll know which direction to go on this.
Understood. Javier, do you have a date?
Yeah, Attorney Lenz, is it a short deferral? We could do September 12th if you think you can find out by then.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Javier. That should, that should be fine.
Great. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to September the 12th.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Here are also votes yes, motion carries. Macy, you then?
Thank you. I also have 217 and 219 Layden Street, which is on my 11:30 docket.
It's right below 169 Maverick. Mr. Stenbridge?
So those three, reading correctly, would be case, case, case BOA 1461338 with the address of 219A Layden Street. Along with that is case BOA 1461351 with the address of 219 Layden Street. And finally, case BOA 1461358, also with the address of 219 Layden Street.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lenz, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we've, based upon the BPDA's recommendation on this, we've gone back to the drawing board and have adjusted this project. The two cases involving the subdivision and the construction of a new dwelling are being withdrawn. The only case that will remain will be the one converting the existing building to a four-unit dwelling. And I believe, just to clean up the docket, it would probably make sense to withdraw the two cases. I could just jump to those quickly. Give me a moment.
Yeah, if you could tell us which BOAs those are.
It would be one second. Sorry, I have, just have it on my screen. Let's see. I believe it's the first and the third on the docket for the 217, 219 cases. But let me just, as long as the description states for subdivision and new structure, let's see.
Yes, they do.
Yep, I have it right here. I apologize.
The first and third do reference subdivision.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, the second one says change occupancy to a four-unit.
Yeah, so the one that changes the occupancy to a four-unit is the one that will remain. The other two, Madam Chair, will withdraw and then just take a deferral on the other one. The reason for the deferral, Madam Chair, is that we understand a new violation was cited by ISD, and therefore, public notice needs to be corrected in order for that case to proceed before the board.
Okay, so why don't we reread the one for deferral, and then we can reread the other two to make sure we're not clumping them all together. Does that sound fine?
That's correct. Yep, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge, do you want to reread the middle one?
So in that case, we will, case BOA 1461351 with the address of 219 Layden Street will be deferred.
Okay. How long or short do you need?
I think Mr. Salas would know, based upon the requirement for public notice.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would say October 17th would be the defer to re-advertise for this.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until October 17? May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Here are also votes yes, motion carries. Okay, do you want to read the other two for withdrawal?
Next, we have case BOA 1461338 with the address of 219A Layden Street, and along with that, we have case BOA 1461358, also with the, with the address of 219 Layden Street.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the withdrawal?
Motion to withdraw.
May I have a second? Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Here are also, yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have an 11:30 rediscussion, if I may. It's for 122 Washington Street.
Okay. Are you looking to defer that?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. I don't know if you can put that into the.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge.
So that would be case BOA 1368388 with the address of 1222 Washington Street?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. For the record, this is Mike Ross from the law firm of Prince Lavelle, one international place. We are seeking to defer this because there was and is a companion case to this case. It's referenced there with regard to the other lots that adjoin it at 443 Harrison Avenue. For whatever reason, those companion pieces were not advertised with this, with this case. And so ISD ZBA is aware of this and would have to re-advertise both the companion case as well as the underlying 122 Washington Street case for those notice reasons.
Mr. Salas, can I have a date?
Yes, the next available day would be October 31st.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer until October 31st?
May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Here are also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Mr. Stenbridge, 34 Cobden Street? Yeah, with me clean?
Sure.
That would be case BOA 1361964 with the address of 34 Cobden Street.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 51 Dobson Road. We're here today seeking a deferral on this matter, and the reason being, the, there was an additional violation that needs to be advertised through the ZBA office, and so we are requesting a deferral so that that can be properly advertised and we can return before the board.
Okay, Mr. Salas?
October 31st for this one, to Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to August 31st.
October 31st?
October 31st.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Here are also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. See you there.
Okay.
Further request for withdrawals and deferrals, go on. Return to case BOA 1037246, the address being 59 to 59A Hancock Street. Is the applicant and/or they represent the president?
Yes, here, with my wife.
Okay, please proceed.
Right here, okay. You have the binder? Okay, you good to go? You can hear me, correct?
Yes, we're waiting on you.
Sorry about that. Okay, so back in 2016, my wife had purchased the condo, this 59 Hancock, Unit 4, with the seller having, you know, in the deed and roof deck rights, I believe, page four, that'll indicate that it's highlighted. The seller at the time had a permit out, she was gonna, you know, construct the deck, and there was an open per. and there was an open permit. So more or less out of ignorance, which we know is not an excuse, my wife proceeded to, you know, build the deck. You know, it was a big part of the reason why she wanted to purchase the unit itself. It's one of only two units that have deed of roof deck rights. So we wound up constructing, as you'll see, it's a standarding, kind of a floating roof deck. It doesn't fasten into the roof deck below. And we constructed the deck to spec and code compliance and whatnot. And what we found out, again, the hard way, is that the whole permit issuance and everything has to be started over from scratch. You can't just resume a permit that has been pulled to construct anything, regardless if things have been deeded or not. So it's with regret, we tried to rectify things. And that's why its summary is as billed, seeking approval retroactively in that manner. We wound up, obviously, as you see through an architect survey, have the plans and stamped. And everything is to spec, it's obviously not finally approved because we need this permit to be activated or whatnot before the inspector can come out. So we've tried, obviously, this is a mistake that we made initially, and it required this the hard way. We've made multiple trips to ISD, and this was back in 2016 as well, to try to rectify things. Unfortunately, they had the incorrect person, the person that is the head of our condo trustee. She was getting mailed violations and things that we were not, we were totally unaware of until recently when we went to the housing court. And the gentleman from ISD Council helped us kind of set things up and get everything in our right name and proper. Because we really want to have this legalized as is. It's an important outdoor space, it's an asset from an equity standpoint to be able to utilize this space. And so we did the community process. Molly Griffin, I believe, is no longer representing constituent services with Beacon Hill in the mayor's office. But she helped set a couple meetings up with Beacon Hill Civic Association. One we did on...
We'll hear from ONS on that, we'll hear from ONS on that.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if they were present.
Yep.
So we really have done all the legwork. Architect, unfortunately, he's on vacation this week, he's not able to speak. But he, obviously, ASB is his design group, and you fill in the binder. And I don't know if you got a letter from the Beacon Hill Civic Association? We had an abutter at Hancock. You can see their little half-window, transom window that's right there. They had approval, and then there was another abutter on Myrtle Street that had disapproval. I don't know if you guys have access to...
We'll get that, we'll go through that and look at this.
I didn't know if you had access to those letters, because four Myllolds was more...
Why don't we open it up to questions? This is, I just want to see if there are questions from the board. Hearing none, let's move to public process.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maggie Vansquith, in the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. As mentioned, an abutter's meeting was run by my predecessor, Molly Griffin, I believe, a year and a half ago. And no concerns were raised by abutters at that meeting. This applicant also met with the Beacon Hill Civic Association, who voted to oppose the application citing density concerns and the fact that another abutter's window opens onto the roof deck. Those are their main points of concern. I also have on file a letter of opposition from said abutter, whose window opens onto the roof deck. And he also cited concerns over noise and air quality. With that, we'd like to defer the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Elena.
Hi, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Vanessa Wu from Council President Flynn's office. Council President Flynn would like to go on record in opposition based on the feedback from neighbors and the Beacon Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Hi, Elena, you looking to give testimony? So I sent a request to unmute you. She might be having some issues. I have no additional liaisons. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Can we just respond to the question about whether there's an abutting window facing this roof deck? The proponent?
Well, there's, so I don't know what they said, opens up onto the roof deck. There is, there's several roof decks all around us. The roof deck is encased by several other buildings, you can't see it from the street. I don't know what they mean by open up onto the roof deck. They may have a window from...
Do you have an abutter who has a window that's, you know, opens up or is looking at your... You know, I think that's the comment. Open onto your deck.
There's a building, yeah, like I said, there's a building across there. They can view the roof deck as we can view other people's roof decks that stand directly above us and everything. It's kind of interesting, it's on top of a basement, it's not, I mean, so it is technically a roof deck, but again, it's not on the roof of our building. There's already one of those, but...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? May I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve with BPDA review and no written code.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Here, also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Next, we have two companion cases. First being case BOA 1397652, the address of 36 Milford Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1397647, with the address also being 36 Milford Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LeCasse, LeCasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the proponent and owner of the property, Jas Boville. And also with us on the hearing is Mark Van Brockman from M. Mark Architects. This is a proposal to change occupancy of an existing two-family with accessory office that has been discontinued a long time ago on the ground floor in the front to a two-family. Got renovation of the existing building, install a groundwater recharge system in the rear yard, and then a small bump-out addition at the rear garden and street level, measuring four feet out from the rear facade by 13, and rear balconies at the second and third level, and a roof deck with hatch access. Let's go ahead to the floor plans and elevations. So the resulting product is, yeah, the next one is a good side elevation. Next slide, please. Great, so you can see that the lowest level at rear is a walkout condition. And the bump-out will be those lower two floors upon which sits the rear balcony. And that's just to provide a little bit more space in the back there to get some light into those lower floors. The lower three floors will be one unit, and then the upper two floors will be a separate unit so that those rear balconies is one for each unit, in addition to the rear yard area that's being preserved for the lower unit as well. Next slide. And next slide. And it's just, that's existing floor plans. And next slide. Next slide, please, sorry. Okay, this is the floor plans for the first unit, which consists of the garden level, the street level, and the next level up. The lowest level will not contain bedroom space, but rather, it's a living area and a small office and a bathroom. And then on the upper floors will be the bedrooms and the kitchen area. Next slide. And then this is the top two-floor duplex unit with a hatch access to the private roof deck for the upper-level unit. Next slide. So front and rear elevation. You can see at the front elevation, it's your traditional South End rowhouse. Four floors above street level with the half-windows for the lower level in the front. But at rear, the full walkout condition of the lowest level. And the small box on lower two floors is the four-foot out by 13-foot wide. Addition is being proposed with the two rear balconies as shown. Next slide. This is a good 3D rendering that depicts the proposal. So at right, you can see at the lower two levels is the bump-out addition, adding some windows to get some light into those lower levels with the two rear balconies. And then at the right of the 3D elevation is actually the neighboring deck, or rear deck at number 34 Milford Street. And then the rear yard. And then on the sort of flat side of that right elevation is the building on Tremont Street that 36 Milford Street connects to. There are some adjoining fire escapes, as you can see, that are remaining, connected to the two buildings. Next slide. I think that's it. So the relief consists of conditional use permits for the extensions in the rear yard, conditional use permit for the G-COD system in the rear yard, conditional use permit for the hatch. The FAR is being increased from 3.04 to 3.12. And the rear yard required is 20, and with a bump-out, will have 12 feet in the rear yard. The building code violation is the companion case. You know, the building code requires that access to roof deck shall be by a head house. But both the zoning code and the standards and criteria of the Southern Landmarks Commission require that access to a roof deck be through a hatch. So a hatch is shown on the proposed plans, and that requires building code relief. With that, I'll pause and take any questions.
Thank you, LeCasse. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the extensive community process that occurred. Our office hosted multiple abutter's meetings, and the applicant met with the Eight Streets Neighborhood Association multiple times as well. The applicant addressed concerns from abutters. He received a letter of non-opposition from Eight Streets under certain conditions. Those conditions relate to the removal of a tree. So the applicant would remove and pay for the removal and its associated costs of the existing tree in the rear yard of 34 Milford Street. They would pay to plant a new tree in the yard of 34 Milford Street in consultation with and guidance from the city of Boston and the owner of 34 Milford Street on the appropriate tree species. Install the required groundwater recharge system in the rear yard of 36 Milford Street, not in front of the light well as originally proposed. Pay for an independent engineer to review the proposed groundwater recharge system to ensure its compliance and feasibility. And install and pay for our privacy screens on the side of the rear decks that face 34 Milford Street. Screen design is to be approved by the owner of 34 Milford Street. So that was what was dictated by the Eight Streets Neighborhood Association. But as mentioned before, we had numerous abutter's meetings, and it seems that the applicant has worked things out with the abutters. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-COD letters from the applicant.
Yes, sir. Vanessa?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Vanessa Wu from Council President Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support based on a good community process, good faith compromises, and feedback from the Eight Streets Neighborhood Association, who provided a letter of non-opposition. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council, Elijah Michael Flaherty. Equity and Citizens of Council President Flynn's Office, the Councils to go record and support.
Yes.
Hi, this is Gail Siemono from 8 Bond Street, also speaking on behalf of John Malouf, who are part of the Eight Streets Neighborhood Association. We'd like to support the project as it was submitted to Eight Streets Neighborhood Association. We note the detailed letter, which was mentioned earlier. It also contains language that says that any change in the size or the location of the addition will require additional community process with Eight Streets. And the privacy screens, which were agreed to, are not shown on the plans, but we will take the applicant's representation that those will be provided. And I would also like to acknowledge the efforts of the owner and the applicant, the expended time, effort, and thoughtfulness to work with the direct abutters in the neighborhood to achieve a design that works for everybody, and it is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. No additional liaisons. Okay, any final questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review. And we got the groundwater letter, so we don't need additional review. So I think, I think that's a BPDA design review.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Quick clarification, Javier, do we need a separate vote on G-COD, or can we incorporate that here?
You can incorporate it into this motion.
Can you add that?
Okay, and approval of the G-COD.
Now, may I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Here, also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but there is also the building code item of relief that I think requires a separate motion.
Yes, okay. I'm so sorry, can we have a motion on that as well?
We're confused about that.
Yeah, we're...
What's the, yeah, sorry, LeCasse?
Building code.
Yep, so there is a separate refusal letter. Building code relief is that on a four-story building, access to a roof deck shall be through a head house. But of course, under Article 64 for the Southern zoning code, the end of the landmark, as soon as the guidelines, access to the roof deck shall be through a hatch, which is what we are proposing and what is shown on the plans. But when you do a hatch, that requires building code relief, even though the hatch is compliant with the zoning code and the Southern landmark guidelines. So it's, it is peculiar, but that's how they're structured.
Motion to approve the building code relief.
Right, okay. Off the hatch. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Here, also votes yes. Motion carries. All right, good luck.
Thank you kindly.
We'll now move on to the recommendations scheduled for 11:30. From the subcommittee, we have, I'll read all these together, and then we'll look to vote on them at all, all at the same time. We have, start off with case BOA 1482195, which was approved with the address of 27 Russell Street, which was approved by the subcommittee. Next, we have case BOA 1479082, with the address of 2 Mead Courts, Mead Street Port, which was approved with BPDA design review and review of the documents. Next, we have case BOA 1448246, which was approved to go to the Public Improvement Commission for approval, and by the name of Russell. Next, we have case BOA 1445529, with the address of 16 Boeing Street, which was also approved to go to the Public Improvement Commission for changes that needed to be made in conjunction with that. Next, we have case BOA 1463532, the address of 3 to 5 Thatcher Street, was approved. Next, we have case BOA 1462924, the address of 25 Burr Street, which was deferred to October 26th for BTD control. Next, we have case BOA 1452463, with the address of 21 Louden's Lane, which was approved with BPDA design review. We'll go down to case BOA... We'll go down to case BOA 1442575 with the address of 644 South Street, which was approved with BTD and BPDA designing. Next, we'll go on to case BOA 1033851, the address of 35 Rockwood Street, which was deferred to September 21 for updated plan. Next, we have case BOA 1431740 with the address of 11 Plum Grove Street, which was approved with no building code review. And we, then we have case BOA 1472415 with the address of 351 Vermont Street, which was approved with, along with BPDA design review and no building code review. And finally, we have case BOA 1476997, the address of 16 Lyle Street, which was approved with BPDA design review and no building code review.
Okay, may I have a motion? Motion to approve the subcommittee recommendations?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Here, also votes yes, motion carries.
With that, we will move on to the rediscussions scheduled for 11:30. We have, first, we have two companion cases, one being case BOA 1448731 with the address of 150 Chestnut Street, 150 Chestnut Avenue. And along with that, we have case BOA 1448704 with the address of 152 to 152H Chestnut Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative present?
President, Mr. Stunbridge?
Great, can you walk us through your request?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My wife and I are the owners of, if, we could just pull up on the plot plan of 150? Do we have just the plot plan document? I believe we shared it with the... Yeah, thank you. So my wife and I are the owners of 150 Chestnut. We also have Jeff Corin on the call, who is our neighbor at 152 Chestnut. We have two separate applications that are being presented together. I'm representing the first of the two, representing to modifying a passageway and a curb cut for a parking spot at 150 Chestnut Avenue. As you can see from the plot plan, the parking spot would be set behind 150 Chestnut. The parking spot would not take away any street parking as parking is only permitted on the opposite side of Chestnut Avenue. My wife and I, Melanie, are consolidating down to one car from two cars, and we would like to purchase an electric vehicle. We'll need to add a charging station and a parking spot to our home. The charging stations need to be charged off of existing solar panels on 150 Chestnut.
Okay, you guys are pausing in echo. Somebody's pausing in echo.
Jeff, would you speak yourselves?
Yeah, thank you. All right. We're committed to enhance the space. We'll use semi-permeable pavers, which are not only more aesthetically pleasing, but also more environmentally friendly for runoff in the area. We have full support of the neighborhood with a list of 30 signatures that was reviewed at the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council in June in conjunction with the neighboring application at 152 Chestnut. So all in all, you know, this is a, it's an aesthetic improvement. It supports the electrification of Boston. It addresses the necessity of making the existing infrastructure more environmentally friendly. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to address any questions which the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
So can you just talk about the distance to the Orange Line Station? And, and you are aware that this is front yard parking, which is generally not something we, we approve.
So the parking spot is set behind 150 Chestnut? As you can see here, it's on the side of the home. It's not in front of the home.
That's, that's one, yeah. You can see in the property line that the spot is like right there.
But it's not behind the home, so it's still considered in the front?
It, it's on the sideline, but it is set physically behind the home.
So Bob, can you weigh in? Because I don't, yeah, I don't have your recommendation in front of me.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Bob D'Amico, BTD. As a matter of policy, or in the past, way in the past, the, this parking space does comply with what we normally do. It's, it's really not in the front yard. It's basically at the side as shown. And I'd like to go on record with my support for this proposal.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, can we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. There was a very positive community process where ONS held a Butters meeting, where all the Butters in attendance were in support of this proposal. As I understand, the applicant submitted 30 signatures from Butters on that street that were also in support of the proposal to our office. They went on to meet with the JPNC, who was very supportive of the proposal and voted unanimously to support. They were pleased with the steps that they took working with landscape architects and a commitment to use permeable surfaces. With that, we'll defer to the board. We're unaware of any concerns at this time from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Newman, is, does that feedback apply to the companion case? I just want to make sure we're, because we, it got right into the record together.
Yes, I understand that they, that's how it was viewed by the JPNC, and then we had the meeting, it was all together as a package.
Just want to make sure it was the whole thing. Okay.
Sure.
Any other comments? Bob?
BTD?
I don't know if he, he already spoke, so I don't know if he's... He's got my...
Yes.
Okay, we're good to go. Sorry, Bob, I have no reason.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
I will vote in favor of this, but since they did specify this would be for an electric vehicle, could we add that proviso, that it's only for an electric vehicle?
I don't, Madam Chair, it's Javier. I don't believe that's proviso that can be enforced.
Okay. I'm going to vote no then.
Okay, Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
No.
Share votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1473283 with the address of 604 Metropolitan Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon, or let's say, yeah, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Cesar De Silva. I am the owner of the land at 604 Metropolitan Ave. And I'm actually a architect and minority, small minority contractor out of the 74 Howland Street, Dorchester, Boston, Mass. Would like to, I would like to contribute to the solution of the problems, of the housing problems in Boston by building this three-family building. As a minority contractor, I have been waiting for the opportunity like this for a long time. Now that the opportunity is here, I'd like to have the, that this property contribute to the tax pool and economic development of Boston. This particular piece of land, if not buildable, would have no value to me or, let's say, anybody else, or not even the city of Boston. But buildable will enhance the neighborhood and provide two, three new resid, three new residents for three new families. What brings me before you here is the zoning code refusal letter with the following violations. Use, lot area, lot width, lot frontage, lot iteration, usable open space, front yard, side yard, and rear yard. And with that in mind, I would like to show you here that actually, that's the right plan. We have the site plan. To the left, we are with the nearest, to the left, we have, the code calls for 10 feet. We have 10 feet. As for the rear yard, it calls for 20 feet. We have 16 feet by 40 feet, enough for parking for four cars. To the right, we have like 14 feet or so green area through the length of the property on the Stafford Street area. So on the front yard, we'll be in line with the other housing, or houses already in the street. So I believe this will not be a heavy impact on the street or the corner lot. With that in mind, in the previous meeting, some neighbors showed some concern with context of the area. I'd like to show you, if we go below here, there are already eight, three families in the already in this street. Actually, if we go to the left, the second house to the left, to the proposed project, 596 Metropolitan, is a three-family within the house. And I would like to go all the way down to the pictures. We add pictures. I'd like to see if those pictures are added. Can you bring the drawings all the way down? Maybe, because I have no control here. Down, the other way. I think, yeah, you want to scroll to the end pages? To the end pages, please. Because it was added, we sent to be added. I don't know if I should go back. Okay, I, it doesn't show here, but we sent pictures of the existing houses that, or buildings that already includes, like 596 Metropolitan Ave is a three-family. 630 Metropolitan Ave is a three-family. And 654 Metropolitan Ave is a four. Oh, thank you very much. Go up a little bit, those are, go up. That's the second house to the property in question where I proposed to build a three-family to the other side, to the right side of the house on the right. So two houses to my left, there is a three-family. Let's go back down. And, yes, and right here, we then have 630 Metropolitan. That's a three-family. Go back down. Go down more. Okay, right here is 654, which is four to six units of housing. And go back down again, please. 66 Metropolitan Ave is again four to six units. And we have to five, no, 656, 658 Metropolitan Ave is again a three-family. So there are another three or four more. There are like 674, 7,700 Metropolitan Ave is again four to six units. So I'm trying to show you here that we are actually within the context of the street in question. As per the parking, and if we can go back to the site plan, you see many of three families already on that street. I brought that up because some neighbors showed that it was not in context, but I will try and show you that it is. Now, as parking, at the rear yard, we have a 16 to 40 feet that will be putting, folk that could park for cars. But we propose that on the right side, that shows space for another two cars, but we would eliminate that and have access for parking only from the Stafford Street. No access, the sidewalk will continue on, on the Metropolitan, and we use the parking in the back. So another question that was brought up in the previous meeting is that corner was busy, intersections, and maybe there was various accidents there. But there is an issue for the community, where I would like to be a part of finding a solution for such a, solution for the traffic problems, such as providing traffic lights, speed bumps, whatever to make that neighborhood more, I mean, safer for traffic of cars and accessibility to the neighborhood. I believe if I showed the limits on the site plan, and if anybody has any question, I'll be glad to answer. I would like very much to have a support from this board in providing a three-family and three new families to live on the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't, why don't, Bob, since you have a comment on transportation, on parking?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Bob D'Amico, BTD. Now, parking space one is in the front yard, so that's something that I, I cannot support. And as far as visibility is concerned, we can install signage that will warn on oncoming traffic that there is a driveway. And we do this all the time. So it's something pretty common, but I, I agree. It is, it is a concern. And as far as BTD is concerned, I oversee two spaces that we can approve. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing?
Would the, I have a question, I'm sorry. Would the applicant be amenable to removing that space? I think along Metropolitan Ave?
Yes, that was proposed, if we could remove the Metropolitan Ave parking and just have the parking on Stafford, the four parking in the back. That's what previously said, we, that it's not feasible for the city to have parking on both, access the parking from both streets. So we will do the Stafford. It's okay with us.
And what would the curb cut be on Stafford, Stafford Street?
Right there, where it says 16 feet, the parking in the back.
Can Bob D'Amico speak to that, the width of that curb cut?
Yes, Bob D'Amico, BTD, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to see the curb cut reduced to 12 feet since there's only going to be two vehicles parked where there was four originally. Normally, we approve curb cuts 10 to 12 feet max. And I like to go on the record is to suggest that the curb cut be a maximum of 12 feet. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and would that allow some landscaping along the edge of the property?
Yes, yes, it would. Because there's only two cars rather than four.
Yeah. Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, there were comments from the Disabilities Commission.
Okay, do you want to read those into the record?
There is no, there is no accessible entrance to, accessible entrance to build. One page of the plans shows a wheelchair lift, but all other pages show only stairs. For new construction, all entrances should be accessible. Perhaps the opponent can reply to that?
Yes, actually, to the deck that is accessible to both, to the entrance on the side, where it shows the six feet there, that we can put a lift going up or a lift in the front. If the lift is not us, then we can put a ramp in the front. If the front, that's why we have enough space. And we are only lifting the building up less than maybe two feet or so because there is no livable space on the ground floor. So that would be easier to put the accessible chairlift on the front and the back. I mean, on the side where the entrance shows.
I'm not sure which... I'm not sure which entrance it is, but, uh, they suggest that they would encourage, um, a ramp. Um, but a lift would be, would be, uh, acceptable also. You may want to clarify that with them.
Yes, but with the lift could be up front because the ramp, if we go, show the elevations. Uh, let's see the 3D or the, the elevations. Bring the lens down.
All right, while you do that, are there, are there questions?
You see, right on that door, we can put the lift. We don't have to have stairs of both ways. We can just eliminate once the stairs go through the back and the lift can be put right on the, uh, on the right of that door, the second use of hegras. And as for the front, let's show the front. Uh, right here as well, we can handle, I mean, we can have a, a lift or a, a ramp, which the, uh, uh, it's, uh, which one is favorable for?
I think we can leave that as part of VPDA design review, should we get there? Uh, are there, are there other questions? Okay, can we open it up to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, at this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted two of Butters' meetings. Uh, the first on, uh, October 27th and the second after a new refusal letter was issued by ISD on February 28th. Uh, there was opposition expressed at both of Butters' meetings. Uh, they felt the project was too big for the lot. Um, they also had concerns related to parking and traffic, uh, possibly impacting existing issues related to two nearby high schools, New Mission, PCLA, and ACC, um, also on the street. Uh, the applicant met with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association twice, once in November and again on December. Um, the media Butters were present at both of those meetings. Uh, Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, after reviewing the new refusal letter when they came back, um, stated that they would not be able to support this proposal at this time. Um, our office has received six additional letters of opposition, um, which have been sent to the board and also 10 signatures in support of the proposal that the applicant forwarded to us, and the board should have access to that as well. Uh, with that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Farias here from Councilor Ricardo Arroyo's office. We'd like to call a record and support this proposal. Thank you.
Susan, and then Jay. Susan, you looking at a good testimony?
Hello?
Yep, there you go, go ahead. Susan, and then we'll go to Jay.
Hi, my name is Susan Sullivan. I am a direct abbot at 604 Metropolitan Ave. Um, I just want to state that I am in opposition to the building in, in reference to the pictures that Mr. De Silva put up there of the three-family, um, that is located at 596, that has been in the neighborhood for well over 40 years. The other locations that he referenced are two to three blocks away. So the homes in this area are all two-family or less. I do not feel that that house, the three-family on the non-buildable lot beside my house is conducive to this neighborhood. I have sent to the board pictures of the parking situation on a normal day, so I hope that that's, you have copies of those. And I just, I feel that this is not a single-family I wouldn't be opposed to, but a three-family, it just, I'm totally opposed to it.
Thank you. Jay?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, hi, Jay Haggan, I live across the street. Yeah, I agree with Sue. I think, uh, it's a bit oversized for the lot. And based on all the violations in the current code, where the side, the front, the back, everything is insufficient, it seems that, uh, the way the code is designed, this is too big for this, uh, for this lot. So, um, yeah, I, I'm just opposed to the project, but would be open to a, a smaller, uh, project like a single-family.
Thank you.
Dahlia, can I do a testimony?
Hi, um, Madam Chair member, and the, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Dahlia De Silva. I'm actually Cesar De Silva's daughter. And I have been part of this process and all the meetings since the very beginning. I know some of the concerns were that we are developers, um, and we just want to build things, but that's not the case. This has been a family project where me and my brother are both involved. I have been living in the city my whole life, all 27 years, and I was forced to leave due to the skyrocket price, um, prices of rent. And this is what kind of triggered us to want to create the solution of affordable rent. Not only will it create homes for other people and allow residents to stay in the city of Boston, but it will also leave my siblings with an option and not be forced to leave the community that they were, they were raised in, right? And grew up in.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
You have no additional reasons?
Okay, are there other questions from the board?
Can we just read the BPDA recommendation into the record?
Is there someone from BTD who wishes to speak? I know Jeff is not here today.
Yes, I can, I can read the recommendation.
Thank you.
Um, in reference to BOA 1473283, the Boston Planning and Development Agency recommends approval which provides that plans shall be submitted to the agency for design review with attention to consolidating the parking spaces to the Stafford Street entrance, reducing proposed curb cuts to one, and reducing impervious surface area, and integrating the Disabilities Commission's comments regarding creating an accessible entrance to the building. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review. Paying special attention to the curb cuts, the parking situation, um, and the handicap accessibility.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next we have case BOA 1436713. The address of 604 Greenwich Court.
Huh, so I'm getting the fuck out of town.
Is the applicant?
They want a, you would, they want a...
Hi, um, is this for 6 Greenwich Court?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Hi, uh, my name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. I have a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. And, um, uh, thank you for this opportunity to present this project. I, um, have with us today the owner, Kyle Robideau, and he would like to make up just a brief statement if possible.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair, members, excuse me, members of the board. And Timothy, Kyle Robideau, the owner at 6 Greenwich Court. Um, just wanted to quickly, and to preface Tim's presentation during the community process, you know, in conversations, folks have asked us kind of a couple of questions around, you know, why are we doing this and the timing and so forth? So, um, a couple of things. One, you know, that my wife and I and our daughter have been, you know, long-term residents of Roxbury, super active in the community. I work for the city, we're here long-term. Um, this is an investment in our community, and, uh, we plan to stay here another 16 to 20 years. Um, also, I am, you know, in terms of the structure, so I am legally blind, likely to lose my vision pretty soon, all of it at least. Um, and this would provide an opportunity for us to live on one floor, for me to eliminate going up and downstairs, so it increase the level of accessibility. Um, and then one other option also is that, you know, my, my mother is, um, nearing 80 and lives in Rhode Island by herself, so we've often thought about an opportunity to have my mother stay with us in a, in a place. So that was kind of the precursor and what got us thinking about, um, making or building out this addition and so forth. Um, so I know that, just wanted to kind of set some context with that and then turn it back over to Tim to walk through the plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, um, what we worked on was an addition on the, um, rear of the house to, so that we're not changing the appearance from the street. What you see there is the existing plot plan. And, um, the next drawing is the proposed plot plan, which shows the addition off the back. So the basement addition comes out about 16 feet and then the first floor is back about eight feet off the, um, existing rear wall of the building. The next, um, drawing shows the, the floor plans of the existing. You can see these are very, uh, compact, uh, buildings, they're quite small. And, um, so to go from three to four people living here, we would like to get some more space. The next drawing shows the proposed plans. And there you see the, um, the, the lower level addition on the right, which would have enough room for a pull-out couch or a small bed for, um, Kyle's mother. And on the upper level, there's a small room off the kitchen that will serve as a study and a, a TV room. Um, there's no, um, there is one small deck there, but that would be the only deck that's proposed on the project. And then the last drawing shows the, um, elevations of the proposal. Actually, the, here's the, uh, proposed addition there. The, um, you can see how it steps down, so we're trying to reduce the mass of the, uh, addition and minimize the impact on the neighbors and the neighborhood. And, um, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Uh, ONS hosted a Butters' meeting where several residents vocalized their opposition, expressing concerns that this might set a precedent, uh, for the neighborhood, and also questions around the potential loss of, uh, sunlight. Um, one applicant did express, excuse me, uh, one of Butters that was present did express support, and the applicant upon reaching out to the civic, uh, the civic declined, uh, to weigh in on this proposal. Um, with that, we'll defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm a neighbor and I would like to speak in support of this. Um, I, um, I, I'm a neighbor of, of the family and, uh, I think it's a good idea. I want them to stay in the city. We should be supporting people who want to stay in the city versus driving people out, especially supporting people with current disabilities. Um, and it's great to see how the back areas, in my side as well as, uh, 6 Greenwich Court, are becoming rejuvenated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminole, Boston Rower Trust, and we have both G cod lines from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Madam Chair, neglected to mention, I, I believe the applicant did do a, uh, a shadow study as well to address those concerns when people mentioned the sunlight. My apologies.
Uh, anyone?
Uh, yes. Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair and board members. Um, I live in the, uh, in the area that shares the backyard of Kyle's, uh, property. Um, I will suffer from, uh, sunlight. I know that, uh, Kyle, it's concerned about his mother and himself and so on, but I think the, uh, it's obvious to the Butters, um, that, um, the, the, the size of the development is too ha- too high. It's too tall. Uh, if he only needs one floor, why is he having two? There is no reason to have two floors. Um, and, uh, we have an appeal to the, uh, Boston Landmarks Commission. We are, we are a, uh, historic district and we'd like to, um, become a, uh, Landmarks Commission, uh, Boston Landmarks Commission, uh, uh, area that we are protected so that not, not other, um, developments like this are, uh, approved or, or even issued. And we have a problem with the process. There's just no public process in this, in this, uh, for this applicant. First, uh, first, there are, there are all these violations that he has not addressed, and, um, there's no public process. We haven't had any neighborhood meetings where people are, um, have been able to express their opinion and their, their...
Do you have anything to add, please?
Uh, there is, well, there, already there's about, he violated the, uh, the code by, uh, putting all the cement on his backyard. That's without a permit. I don't think there's a permit for that. So we are just really upset about this issue. I don't know who this Terry is, but I never met her.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Are there any other raised hands?
I have no other raised hands, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Newman, do you just want to comment on the public process again? As a reminder?
Yeah, as, as I understand, there, there was a public process. There wasn't a Butters' meeting that was held by our liaison at the time, Keisha Santana. Um, and there, as I said before, there were Butters that, that vocalized their, uh, opposition and as well as support as well. So I'm not sure, um, if Yvonne was in attendance there or what the issue is.
All right, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Burke, do you want to respond to any of the feedback?
Yes, um, we've certainly tried to work with the neighbors and Kyle and Jill are big parts of the community there. We, um, we're all wide open on one side towards Malina Cass. There's no buildings at all there. And the current state of the backyards is not great, so we, we feel this is actually going to be an improvement. We're adding in a stormwater infiltration system to help control any water issues. As we know, there's lots, seems to be lots more rain these days. So, you know, we've, we've tried to be great neighbors and tried to do everything we can by making it as small as possible and stepping it back. And we think we've been successful at that and hope the board can agree.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion?
Uh, a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
And who's with the G cod?
G cod two, please, thank you.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if I understand correctly, we, the next cases were deferred, so we are on break till one, is that correct, Javier?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, and just a reminder for, to applicants again, we will be a five-member board at 2:00 PM. I'll, I'll mention that again when we recommit. Thank you. See you at 1:00.